Meeting tonight, so I'd like to make a roll call. Clerk Butler Chandler here at Bath Township Office. Mr. Westwasser?
Here at the Sheriff's Township Office.
Mr. Elmer Eji?
At my office in East Lansing, Michigan.
Mr. Benzy?
At my house in Bath Township.
Mr. Fewans Bliss?
Here at my home in Bath Township.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here in Joe and Benzy's basement. He's been here for two weeks.
Let him out, Joe, let him out.
Thank you. Based on the absence of Supervisor Howe, we would need to nominate a member to chair the meeting.
I.
I'll nominate Joel Benzy tonight to moderate tonight's meeting.
Well. If I do that, I have to go get Al's agenda because I don't have one printed, but I'll get it.
Would you rather somebody else? We can do somebody else.
I will support that nomination. While Joe is gone.
Okay, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Joe, you didn't want a roll call vote on that?
Um, no, I'm chairing the meeting. I'm not going to do a roll call vote on that.
Got it.
But thanks for asking.
Just fair thing.
Okay, um. Alan, it's time to do the Pledge of Allegiance and a civil reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, it's now time to approve the agenda. Are there any changes this evening? To the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have one change or addition to the agenda.
Okay, where would you want it, Steve?
Um, I'll let, I'll leave that up to you as the chairman to decide where you need to put it. I'll tell you what it's about. Um, I received a letter today of non-compliance from the Department of Treasury that refers to the, the Downtown Development Authority. And we need to talk about this letter. Oh, this is a timed dated letter and we only have so many days to comply. Well. So you decide where you want to do it. I guess you can put it under new business and see if we want to take and have anybody come in and talk to us about this from our accounting people.
Okay, um, let's make it item A, B, C, D, E, F, DDA. Under new business. Uh, Jason, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I would ask for a little bit of flexibility for agenda item. I think it's new business discussion. I, I, Mrs. Zell is going to do a brief update for us on the broadband committee. She's simultaneously in another meeting, uh, and so I'm going to text her to give her a heads up about five minutes prior to her, I, I, uh, slot. But as you know, our meetings can, I, I very widely and how quickly go through things. So, um, I just asked for flexibility when she does log in, I, I, that Taylor, a letter in and that we, uh, take that agenda item, uh, as we, uh, uh, at that time.
Is that under new business, Jason?
I believe so.
Okay.
It's unfinished.
Unfinished business. Thanks, Karen. Okay. Uh, I need a motion for the changes. Alan made the motion to change the agendas. There a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Ryan seconded it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, the agenda is approved. Uh, disclosure of conflict of interest. Anybody have a conflict this evening that I should know about? Okay. That brings us to public statement number one. Uh, Taylor, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak to the board this evening?
Uh, yes. Uh, so if you'd like to make a public statement at this time, you may do so by, uh, raising your physical hand. If you have your video turned on, raising your Zoom hand or by dialing star nine if you are dialed in. Looks like we have a phone number ending in zero four zero. You can unmute by dialing star six.
Hello, Will Tyler White calling in. Just, uh, noticed, once again, there are no appointments for the, uh, Downtown Development Authority under the committee appointment, so. Uh, I almost get tired about asking about it. We had a status update last meeting, so it'd be nice to get another status update. Or should I just wait till next year? Maybe 2022 will be a good year for the DDA. I don't know. Anyway, uh, go ahead and take care of business and I'll look forward to the day sometime in the future when there will be a Downtown Development Authority. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. White. Judy, I'm sorry, Taylor, is there anybody else?
Yeah, Judy, um, you can go ahead and unmute.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, my comments are under new business, so first quarter 2021 budget amendment and wish list. It was my understanding when, um, the planning board brought before you the capital improvement, uh, recommendations for, um, approval and, uh, the nature trail and, uh, Wishwasher Park playground equipment, I think, was also sent forward to with recommendation for funding that, that the nature trail would be considered um, in this budget, um, realignment process and perhaps put on the watch list. I don't see it there. I just bring that forward for, um, your information and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Taylor, anybody else wishing to speak to the board this evening?
I do not see anyone else at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Um, moving on, item number seven, uh, state and federal and other agencies. Anyone here from those agencies willing to speak to the board this evening?
Looks like we have Commissioner Washington. Um, go ahead.
Good evening, trustees. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Dwight Washington, 4600 Clark Road, Bath Township. And there was a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. Um, one being that what was initially called Older Michiganyan Day has been canceled because of COVID, but it's been re-identified as Senior Action Week and that will be going on from 5:10 to 5:14. And anybody who wants to, um, be part of that is encouraged to go to the Tri-County Office on Aging Facebook page and then there's a place where they can sign up and, uh, be part of that advocacy for seniors in our community. Um, I'd also like to bring to your attention that Community Mental Health has sent out a call for action and they're asking for people to contact the, um, Health and Human Services because there is an integration of physical health and behavioral health, um, financing that's taking place. And what that will mean is that there's a shift in Medicaid funding and managed care fu- funding from a public PI HP system to a private Medicaid healthcare plan. And CMH is concerned that if it goes private, that there'll be a number of, um, underserved, under-recognized individuals who will not get the same services that they need so that they're just asking for, um, the public to comment. Um, I'd also wanted to let you know that because of the pandemic, we didn't do the, uh, pickup tires, scrap tires for a while, roadside tires. And so we are applying for a grant with the Eagle, Department of Eagle in hopes that we'll be able to do that. So because around the county, there has been a seemingly increase in tires that have, have come up this spring. And so the county is trying to make action to get those picked up. Um, I'd also like to let you know that the, we do have a new, or we just passed a Clinton County Emergency Operations Plan update for 2021 and would encourage anybody who needs or wants to find out more about that to contact Tom Helms. Um, two more things. We are going to have, because of COVID, there was a waiver on delinquent dog licenses and that is going to be extended through the second quarter. And six. Clinton County is going to put forth a additional declaration of local state of emergency and we do that on a 30-day basis. So that's kind of a heads up to you to let you know that we are trying to provide an umbrella for the counties because we know that it's a contentious issue for different municipalities within the, within the county. And so because of COVID is not true, uh, behind us, it's still very much in front of us, we do want to put that declaration of emergencies out there. However. Clinton County is, I'd reg- with regards to COVID, Clinton County is actually doing quite well. We've actually vaccinated 55% of the population and we hope that we will, uh, we hope that we'll be able to, um, continue that going, um, although the, some of the vaccinations are not um, being used and the appointments are not being filled, but so we're encouraging people to get out and to continue to, um, let people know and encourage people to get vaccinations so that we're all safe. And, uh, lastly. Um, the American Rescue Plan, we have been waiting patiently for guidance from the federal government and so we've been careful not to like over-invest or make promises that we can't keep or waiting for that guidance before we make a decision. And that is really supposed to be coming out anytime soon. So when we get that information, then, um, you all will get that information as well. And I'm available for questions if, uh, if I can answer any.
Any questions by board members of Dwight tonight? Thank you very much, Dwight.
Thanks, Dwight.
Uh, number eight is our consent agenda. We'll have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jason and a second by Al to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carried. Um. Item A is the acceptance of the minutes and I think we just did that. So then we go to item nine. Nope, that's the approval of the minutes. Of the Board of Trustees meeting of April 19th, 2021. Are there any changes to the minutes of the meeting? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve and place on file.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
There go.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Uh, number 10 is the approval of the vouchers. I'm going to do a roll call vote on this. Is there anyone wishing to approve the vouchers this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I approve, I would move approve the vouchers for the meeting of May 3rd, 2021.
I'll second you.
Ryan seconded it. Mr. Treasurer Wishwasher made the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We need to do a roll call.
Sorry, we're going to do a roll call.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer Eji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Mr. Fewans Bliss?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Westwasser?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, number, item 11 is the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Wishwasher?
Mr. Chairman, thank you this evening. I gave you, uh, I believe that the Taylor emailed you a copy of the first quarter 2021 investment listing with the total monies that we have invested. Um, I'm required to give you this each quarter, which I have. Um, this has been audited actually for this quarter, so it's good to go. And they have it, you have the general fund total as well as your investment fund totals. Also in the Treasurer's Report tonight, I'm happy to take any questions, if anybody's got any questions on this piece that they emailed you. Um, but if not, I'll move on. Also, um, we did complete the audit last week, Tuesday, the field work was done. They're still working on the different pieces of it. Uh, we should have some numbers and some, uh, things in the coming weeks on that. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has tonight for any of these things.
Does anyone have any questions of Treasurer Wishwasher this evening?
We.
Okay. Uh, seeing none. Thank you, Treasurer Wishwasher.
Thank you.
Item 12, Committee Appointments. Uh, we have a nomination for the Sewer Board of Appeals. It's Spencer Tessimer.
Joe, can, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I see that Kathy Zell has jumped on. I, I'd like to ask the boards to just switch, um, uh, committee appointments with the, uh, items for introduction under unfinished business, if that would be okay?
We can do that.
Thank you. Taylor, will you unmute? Ah, great. So I, I, I will just do a brief introduction. Um, Kathy Zell is, I, are the, uh, Chair of the, uh, Bath Broadband Task Force. Um, and she, uh, reached out and wanted to provide an update to, uh, the township board on the work of the broadband, uh, task force. So Kathy, I'll leave it up to you.
Well, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, yeah, mostly I just wanted to introduce myself and, uh, get to know the board a little bit and, and have you, uh, get to know me and ask questions and, um, you know, make sure that the task force is, is going the direction that you'd like us to go while we've got time to, to switch directions. So again, my name's Kathy Zell. Uh, I am currently the Executive Director for the LCC Foundation and I grew up in Lansing. Uh, moved away, but when I moved back a little over 10 years ago, I, uh, moved to the Hamlet at Hawk Hollow in Bath and now live uh, in Chandler State. So, um, been very unhappy with my broadband and, uh, so when the call came out, uh, I believe if you don't like something, you should try to pick and, uh, when you're asked to serve, you should serve if you can't. So, um, so that's sort of what brought me here. Uh, I am chairing the task force. I want to be transparent. I'm not a IT expert, but I am, um, a professional and have been in leadership roles. And so I see my role as, uh, organizing and taking the mountains of information that we have and trying to coordinate that, come up with recommendations for you. So we have organized into three workgroups with, uh, people who are, uh, very much expertise in their area. And so I'm very excited about that. So the three areas, we have, um, our government relations and funding. We have a community outreach group and an IT infrastructure group. And so, you know, one of the things that as a task force, I'm just going to pull up a couple of notes here. Um, but you know, we, we believe that broadband is important for the community. We know that our children do better in school and we know that if we want Bath to be a place people want to live, we need to be providing, uh, good broadband as more and more companies are going virtual and that was even pre-COVID and so certainly post-COVID more and more, uh, more and more jobs are virtual. So we need to have good broadband available if we want people to live in Bath. And while 86.7% of broadband or of Bath Township residents, according to the American Media Survey, have broadband, we know that doesn't mean it's reliable, fast enough or affordable. And those are the things that we're trying, uh, act with that. So, um, like I said, organized in those three workgroups, we have reached out to other townships, to government officials from Clinton County to state, um, and also to our, uh, US representatives and worked with some other communities to see what they're doing. And our hope is as funding becomes available and, um, that we're ready to go at that point. One of the things that's been difficult to, as we've been trying to come up with this plan is, is every day there's a new, uh, piece of legislation or a new notice that says, hey, there's gonna be money here or there's not money here or care's money can be seems to be a little bit ever-changing right now, but our hope is that our job is to make recommendations to you and not to actually formalize the plan. So if we come up with, um, each of those committees will come up with sort of what they need and what they think. And then our hope is that we come up with three or four recommendations that'll probably be at three or four different price points. And then you guys can decide what to do with that information from there. So I see this as a one or two-page quick kind of, um, you know, recommendation proposal. And, uh, I guess the other thing that I want to let you know is when the task force was started, I, it was maybe we would have this by the end of May. I don't think that that's possible. Uh, although this week, end of this week, we are meeting, all those workgroup leads are meeting. And, um, so we might have a better idea on timeline. I'm hoping by your next meeting in two weeks, you have a little bit more information uh, that we can share as far as a timeline. Um, but I guess those are basically the things I wanted to share. At this point, we're keeping, um, Jason in the loop as best we can as we go go through this so that he can keep you in the loop. But I also wanted you all to know you can reach out to me anytime or, um, and so I can give you an update as well. And I'm sure you guys have questions because I've just been rambling now.
There, are there any questions by board from board members to, uh, to Kathy at this time? How about staff? Has staff got any questions?
No, thank you.
Ryan?
I don't have a question. Just to thank you for your leadership and thanks for helping us to solve this problem. You are not alone in struggling with this. I struggle with it in my own home and my neighbors. So appreciate that, uh, you're leading the way.
Thank you, trustee Ryan. I appreciate that. It, it's, I'm learning a lot, I have to say. It's been, it's been fun, but it's also some of it's been way over my head, but I'm getting there.
Well, I would also like to offer some words of encouragement. Uh, this is an area we need to look at and we're very thrilled that the community is involved in the discussion. At least I am.
We've got a, a great task force, a great group of people and a, a very diverse group with very different interests and very different talents, which, uh, which in the end will help.
Thank you very much for all you do. Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kathy before we go here? All right. Let's go back to the agenda. Item, uh, 12 is committee appointments. I have, uh, Teresa Tessimer, uh, for the Sewer Board of Appeals. Uh, do we have a motion for that? Ryan?
Uh, I'm, I'm torn, uh, Mr. Chair. I think Spencer is a really good candidate. Uh, I see his application that he also has shown interest in the Planning Commission. Uh, if the supervisor were here, my plan was to ask her if she would consider putting him up for Planning Commission, uh, since we have vacancy on that committee. Uh, I'm not sure what to do now that she's not here. My concern is, I know she's made it clear to us that she would like one person, one committee. So if we were to place him on the Sewer Board of Appeals, would she not then consider putting him on the Planning Commission? Uh, I just don't know what to do with that without her being here. Uh, but if the rest of the board would like to move forward, I support his candidacy wholeheartedly. And I would argue he could do both since Sewer Board of Appeals rarely meets, but I, I, I just not sure how to move forward.
Well, would the board like to wait two weeks and have that discussion in the next couple of weeks with Supervisor Howe? And then bring this item back?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Well, then I'll accept the motion to table this item till the next meeting.
Provo.
Well, somebody's got to make the motion now. Oh, you did.
I did.
Okay, somebody's got to second it. I gotta. I'm used to being a trustee. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, items tabled until the next meeting.
Can you tell us who seconded that, please?
Yes, Ryan did.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um. That leads, leads us down to item 13, which is unfinished business. Items for, uh, introduction and discussion. And, uh, that was Kathy's spot and she's not there. So item B, under unfinished business, is items for action and there are none. So then we go to 14, new business. Uh. Karen, this looks like this is mostly you through the whole thing, but I'll get you started on the 2021 Improvement Agreements for Bath Township Clinton County Roads. You're up, Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, what you have before you is the entire package of contracts that we, we received from the Clinton County Road Commission, um, over the past week and a half. I have gone ahead and summarized those agreements for you, um, in the memo that should be before them. Um, including the funding sources, which includes the $397,700 that the township approved in its 2021 budget and the amount of $84,379.26 that Clinton County Road Commission will put towards our projects. As you review through the projects, including asphalt, brush spraying, chip seal, let me, um, flip my pages here. Chloriding, um, a clover replacement, graveling, mowing shoulders and overband. We actually come in under budget, um, to what has been, uh, budgeted this year. But I do know that this group, um, the road committee that we currently have and this board has been supportive in the past of taking a look at what is left in August and sometimes moving ahead with additional projects. So, um, I know this group doesn't like to leave anything on the table if they can. Um, so the road committee is going to meet tomorrow and they are going to discuss these projects um, and bring back a recommendation to you for your next meeting on, I believe it's May 17th, um, 2021, um, so that these can be approved and, um, hopefully, um, the road commission begins to execute the work.
Are there any questions of, uh, board members at this time?
Yeah, Karen, sorry.
Okay, Alan, go ahead.
Okay, uh, on the asphalt at Hunt Saker, it says 2.29 miles. Uh. Is that a typical error? Because that's only a quarter of a mile for $90,000.
Um.
Remember that.
Let me look back at the contract and see, Al, just one second. Sorry, there's a lot to flip through.
Yeah.
That just.
All right.
Is more expensive, Al?
It's, uh, well, it says Coleman to Chandler. And, uh, I'm trying to picture in my mind. Coleman, I don't think goes to Chandler.
It looks like I should have started in the beginning instead of going to the end. Okay, so it says Hunt Saker from Coleman to Chandler, .29 miles, Mill and Phil.
Well, it seems awful expensive. We'll talk to them tomorrow.
Okay.
Ryan?
Uh. Yes, I did have a question. Yes, I got it again.
Okay.
Is the 84,000? Is the $84,379.26 from the Clinton County Road Commission, does that max out what our matching can get us?
I don't know how the match is calculated, to be honest with you. Um, I know how it works. If a project's 40, we put 20, they put 20, so they whittle away at theirs a little bit at a time. Um, but I don't know how it's calculated, but we can certainly ask them that and bring that back to you.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, or, or possibly somebody here knows. Treasurer, Wes Foster.
Well, the question, the question is, is that it is, like, I have to take my mask off. I'm sorry. Trouble hearing and talking both. The, the question is, it's a great question. And the question is, is does the match remain the same if we come in under budget or does that prorate down according to the way that our, um, oh, the rest of it has. In the past, um, to be frankly honest with you, we've always taken and did a little more than what we've taken and, and we budgeted for, so it wasn't a factor. But if that's the case, then you should take full advantage, in my opinion, of your, of your money and you should get as much match as you can. Um, and find the extra projects to, to do what needs to be done. But it's a great question, Ryan. I, I wanted to ask the same question you've beaten to it, so you did a great job there.
Al? Yeah. Uh, Taylor, you sent us, is, is she there to talk to?
She's here.
Uh, you sent us a, a thing from, uh, the county stating they were going to do Park Lake Road to the county line. Uh, that isn't showing in here, so I'm, I'm taking it that, uh, we have more money coming from them because that is being a primary road.
Yeah, that's on the last page, Al. Of this, of this section. And they are going to do that, um, let me find it on the list here. Um, Park Lake Road, south of the, south county line to Webster Road, which is 3.01 miles, and they're estimating that at $80,000.
Mine don't have that. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Mine don't have that for some reason.
Okay, we can verify that with them tomorrow too, Al.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have another question on the, on the thing we might want to think about, which will be I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, but all I'm saying is, is that quarter mile for the Hunt Saker Drive or for, uh, $90,846.75. Um, that's, that, that is correct. That is just a quarter mile. If you think about Bath Township's line ends abruptly right after you, you head west there. Um, it's not very much, um, it, it doesn't go, it'll take long, takes, it's a pretty short quarter mile. However, the other thing that you want to remember is, is this is the 425 agreement with Dwight Township that you're putting $90,000 worth of tax dollars into on an area that you collect about, uh, oh, $70,000 a year in operating funds off of. So, uh, thank you very much for taking care of the roads over there. Well, I'm just giving you the details.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
It's nice to follow the money, Steve.
What you gotta remember, you share 50% of the operating in the Dwight 425 with Dwight Township. And, and we provide, um, obviously this public safety services and we, we run everything else and the source is kind of split up, but they provide capacity. We provide the paperless services, but when, when you, when you go to start fixing roads in the 425 area, um, I hope that they're well-intended and they need to be done because I'm, I'm going to tell you, we wrote, wrote, uh, Dwight Township check for about $70,000. So I mean, we got $70,000 out of it. So you just went negative $20,000 in tax collection last year over there. Um, and, and, uh, you're fixing the road and you're taking care of the 425, I guess, and that's what your responsibility is for 50 years with a 50-year renewal.
Thank you. Any other questions of Karen at this time on the roads? Okay, let's, let's move on then. Um, let's take a look at the first quarter budget amendments and watch list, Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, what I put before you at this time are some budget amendments from the first quarter. And in addition, um, after speaking with a trustee this afternoon, I thought I would clarify that some of these items, um, I probably could have put another, uh, a more thorough explanation under them. Um, in the, um, I'm going to move down to, um, for example, um, the BSNA cemetery management software that I've, um, that I've proposed um, was questioned if that money could come out of the cemetery monies that we have um, in the fund. Um, and I think that that was something that was very good to point out. Um, I will work with Mr. Wiswasser if this is approved, um, and, and make that, um, so that accounting is handled properly and proposed from there. Um, in addition to that, I was asked about the, um, building and grounds, the, the sign purchase. And that's quite a hefty amount. I was asked why I didn't propose that last year. At the time, I was looking at adding to full-time positions and I, and if I have to choose between people and equipment, I will choose people. Um, at this time, I felt it was fair to ask for that. Um, the sign itself needs to be um, repaired. It was hit by a car a couple of years ago. Um, that doesn't mean we can't fix it, but if the township is interested in moving towards having an electronic sign that can be updated from inside, um, this would be the cost for that item. Um, and like I said, we can fix the one we have, but if the township's interested, um, that information's there for you to consider. Um, I won't go through each one, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Jason's got his hand up.
Okay.
I, if I remember correctly, our sign ordinance prohibits electronic signs. So I, I, I would consider, oh, looks like Nick jumped on.
Sign ordinance, I thought it'd pop in. We actually do allow electronic signs, but there are restrictions on how frequently the message can change.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it has to be a static image. There can't be any sort of animation with it.
Yeah. I would also consider, um, being very responsible in how we, um, if it were approved, um, the lights that were chosen, because I know that there's some can be very obnoxious to not only people that are driving and being distracting, being blinding, but also possibly distracting, um, the neighbors as well. So I would, I would take that under consideration. I don't want this to be a a nuisance to anyone, certainly.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Um, let's take a look at the item C. Uh, fund balance at the Southern Clinton County Municipal Authority.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we receive this letter each year, um, from, actually, um, Clerk Challander received this this year. Um, it's the disposition, the Clinton County, um, I'm sorry, SCUMO would like to know what we would like to do with our fund balance that's left over from um, 2020, which at this time is about $110,267. Um, there are, in, in, in my history, um, here for nine years, we generally take that money back, um, from them and continue to, um, use it towards projects in our system. Um, I don't know if Treasurer Wiswasser has any other input on that, but that's what I've seen during my time and what the benefits are um, of leaving it there. I'm unclear, but I've always seen us take it back.
Treasurer Wiswasser, do you have a comment on this item?
Through the years of the authority, when we were building and expanding over there, all four municipalities, I may be wrong about that, if we want to, three, four, four municipalities over there contributed their share of their, um, fund balance. At the end of the year, we put it into a special fund. We used it to take and put the plant, last plant expansion on that the plant was done at the plant and we paid cash for it to save the municipalities and the bondholders money. We was able to do that all upfront. Um, last, since I've been back here since 2016, I've always been an advocate of bringing the money back to the Township Passeur Fund when 16, when we got back there with some kind of rough shape and we've been able to take and build the sewer fund back up with all of our repairs and maintenance. The 30-year-old system we have is probably more like 35 years now. Oh, I guess I've been here a couple of years. Um, so it comes back to the township and it, and it has a place here and we utilize it here and it helps lower some of the cost of, of our money and be able to invest a few more dollars for a little longer term and not use our money for repairs and maintenance that we need. Well, yes, it's a good idea to bring it back.
Thank you. Any other questions by board members at this time? Okay, I'm sure we'll be seeing this soon for an action item.
You will in two weeks.
Yep. Okay. The next item is E. It's the resolution, uh, the change of the Sewer Board of Appeals terms of appointment to three years.
You skipped one, sir.
Which one did, oh, the cable communication.
Cable, yep.
Cable, okay. Cable Communications Franchise Agreement. Uh, go ahead Superintendent Hildebrand.
Thank you. Um, so these normally come to, um, unfortunately, this one came to Supervisor Paula Clark. Um, they must have old records. Um, so we've, we're going to try to update that, but this is the Cable Communications Franchise Agreement between Bath and Millennium Digital Media, which came under the, the, um, letterhead of WOW. Um, which I think we're all familiar with, um, for internet TV and phone service here in the township. Um, I normally, uh, in my time have seen these be somewhat rubber stamped by the, um, Board of Trustees. Um, it does bring money into the township for the franchise agreements. Um, depending on the agreement, it can be zero, uh, to sometimes 3%, maybe up to 5%. Um, of course, we've been taking a good look at, um, internet service, and I know this is not internet service, but I, I'm bringing this here for the board to have a good discussion around this and to see what the pleasure is. Um, I'm sure the days of, of, um, kind of rubber stamping those are gone, especially in the current, in the current, um, environment. So I, I would like you to engage in a conversation and, and give me some direction as to what you would like to do with this agreement.
I, I have a question, Karen. A lot of these agreements are time-sensitive, so
They are.
What's our timeline on this before we respond?
So actually, I believe this one has already expired. Um, but if you note on page one, right after the cover letter, it says instructions for, um, local franchise agreements. Um, in the second paragraph, there's a list, one, two, and three of what will happen as a result of, um, the agreement either being approved or, um, if it expires. Um, one, terminate the existing franchise agreement before the expiration date of agreement, enter into a new agreement. Continue under the existing franchise agreement amended to include only those provisions required under a uniform video service local franchise. And then continue to operate under the terms of an expired franchise until uh, a local franchise agreement takes effect. So it sounds to me, no matter what you do, they'll continue to operate, um, business as usual until we can come to terms with them.
Okay. So we have a little bit of time then.
We do.
Okay, Jason?
So I, I dug around a little bit and I found the, uh, act, uh, that underlies, uh, this uniform agreement. Um, there's a clause in there that we have 15 days, uh, to let them know if the agreement is, um, is lacking in any way, and then 30 days to act upon it. Uh, and if we don't act upon it within 30 days, then it is assumed to be complete and will be approved. Um, and so what I don't know is, uh, obviously the letter was dated March, uh, 29th. Um, uh, so, uh, and we're now, uh, reviewing this. So I, but they, they also did not specify elements within the agreement itself in terms of the percentage of, I, I, um, uh, the franchise agreement, whether it's 2 to 5%. Um, I, now, like most statutes, the language is pretty dense and I, I'm wondering if it might make some sense to one, reach out to WOW and say, you know, I, given that this was sent to the wrong person, I, can you give us a little bit of extra time to, I, I think about this? And then I, I wonder if it might make sense for the planning commission to review not only the franchise agreement, but review it against what, uh, our telecommunications ordinance. Um, my understanding is the telecommunications ordinance was drafted in 82 and hasn't been touched since. Um, I, and then I, I think third, I think there might be some interest in, um, uh, sending this on to the broadband task force as an FYI. Um, I, I, I don't think we have, because this is a uniform agreement that's mandated by statute in terms of the template and everything. I don't know how much room we have to wiggle, but I think there might be room to wiggle. Uh, not so much to do massive, you know, uh, overhaul of the agreement, but I, points of negotiation. And so I'd really like it, if we had I, I, some expert eyes on this.
I did it, I'm sorry, I did it at the request of Trustee Fueens Bliss, have a, um, brief conversation with, um, Legal, um, which I asked if there was ever room for negotiations in these agreements, especially with accountability of service they say they will provide. And he said absolutely. So, uh, I, I didn't want to say that there was something we could do if there wasn't, so I wanted, I wanted to check that because it was kind of my understanding that, um, the, you know, these were all uniform, for the lack of a better term, and that we wouldn't be able to negotiate anything differently, so.
The, the other thing I, I, I'd like to point out is, is there, the broadband task force has had some initial conversations with WOW. Um, I, and I, they, they may be a willing partner to, uh, help us meet our needs. And so this is, I believe, one of the avenues that the broadband task force is is exploring. So if we do reach out to WOW, just, you know, let them know that, you know, we're looking at the larger picture here and then ask them if there's perhaps maybe, I, I, I come and have a conversation with either us or the planning commission um, to talk about this as well as, you know, future plans. Because I, this is a 10-year agreement, is it not?
It's a 10-year agreement and it can be reviewed every 24 months.
The financial audit, right?
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's an excellent idea. If we have the, uh, time to refer it, I think that's great. Um, but I would think we'd have a responsibility to, uh, notify WOW that we are, uh, going over this and, uh, that we're, it's under review here. I think we need to notify them and tell them it's under review. And we want to talk to them about this soon. Okay. I think they have to know we're looking at it because of some of the time constraints that are involved in this.
I would, of course, if it's the board's pleasure to, to send this to the planning commission, I would, of course, um, communicate with WOW um, and open the door to those conversations, um, of those taking place either at, um, the planning commission or this board, um, where the planning commission could, could join us. Um, so whatever, whatever you choose, I will make WOW aware of.
Well, I'll, I'll entertain a motion on this issue.
So I, I move to, I, I send this document to the planning commission with the instructions to review it and to provide guidance um, on it. I, I will let the planning commission decide whether or not they want to review the telecommunications ordinance or, you know, leave that to the side. Um, I, and then in the meantime, I, with, on the assumption that in the meantime, I, I, Ms. Hildebrand will, I, I communicate with WOW and see if there's flexibility in terms of our timeline.
Would you like to involve your broadband folks at the same time?
I would.
Okay, you want to make that part of your motion? It's a friendly suggestion.
Um, I, I think, I, Ryan has his hand up. I, I, I'll just say that I, I think if anything in terms of an, I, I, an FYI, not so much that we are asking them to act on it or to provide um, any suggestions to the board, I, any input should be sent to the planning commission from them.
Okay. Ryan?
Uh, it, my reading of this was, this was just about the TV service. Does this include the internet service too?
They are an internet provider, yes.
But I don't think the agreement covers internet service. I think it's just the cable. I think it's just the cable. And if that's the case, I don't think it makes sense to go to the broadband committee. If I'm wrong, I wholly support what you're saying.
Okay.
How about this? I'll, I, I adjust my motion to, I, I, I ask the Planning Commission to, give them discretion to send this to the broadband committee if they find that I, there are linkages to broadband.
Okay, I just don't want to overlook any groups. I, I, I think that's fine. Okay. All right. If we're comfortable with this motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I need a second.
Alan seconded it.
Oh, thank you.
Ryan wants to talk.
Sorry, I just have one more comment. In the crazy world in which someone from WOW watches this meeting, I just want to go on record, this, this agreement super annoyed me. They have awful service. Our township residents complain about it nonstop. And then they have the audacity to send the letter to someone who hasn't been in office for five years. I mean, maybe their Internet doesn't work so well either, and they can't simply Google who our supervisor is. But, and they call us a village. It just felt like, here's the standard form. We don't know who's there, just sign it and we'll take our money. So in case they're watching, I just want them to hear me say that. It's not impressive.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right. Let's see. Keep me on the right letter here. E, resolution to change the Sewer Board of Appeals terms. Supervisor Howe. Karen, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I did, I, at the request of Supervisor Howe, we placed this in the packet, and then she was out to tend to some family business. When she returned on Friday, I spoke to her and, and indicated to her I did not think this was the most appropriate way to accomplish what she was trying to do, which was stagger the terms of office for the Sewer Board of Appeals and set their terms. So I had indicated to her that I thought the best course of action would be to have an ordinance amendment. That way, you know, people in the future weren't looking for a resolution in the vault as opposed to just having things codified in the ordinance where people would normally look for that information. She seemed amenable to that, and I know that she's not here tonight to speak for herself, but it seemed that she was open to that idea.
So we'll see this in a different forum later then.
Yes, I would bring it back to you in the form of an ordinance, introduction and first reading of an ordinance amendment.
Okay, any questions of Superintendent Hillbrand? Brian?
Not a question, but just a comment. And the board probably saw my email about this. If, if in case it does come back in this format, there needs to be some sort of resolution as part of the resolution. There needs to be a line that says something like, be it resolved X, to make it clear what we're actually resolving. But I'm in favor of doing it a different way, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions of board members at this time? Okay, we'll, we'll look for this later then.
Thank you.
Items for action. There aren't none this evening.
Oh, you have an addition on the.
Yes, there is. There's an addition to the, um, I have to get back to. Treasurer Wishwasher, would you like to report to us on the DDA issue?
Good evening. Today I received a letter dated April 23rd from Michigan Department of Treasury. It's a notice of non-compliance with the DDA and reporting. The DDA is, is typically the reporting part of this is, is what through the DDA board and then questioning our accounting firm, Maynard and Custerson, Mr. Stevens. And we talked about this this afternoon. And the lack of a DDA board and the township board reverts to being the one who has to make decisions on the part of the DDA. And that's what I'm here for tonight. The last time we were out of compliance is, the reason why we're out of compliance because of the Public Act 57, which was enacted in 19, or 2018, which requires all DDAs to make a fiscal report as well as a plan report and any changes, or they have to report their plan information to the Department of Treasury. Our plan is actually a two-part plan. We actually have a DDA TIF development, a TIF plan as well as a development plan. In the past, our planning director, Mr. Shorkey took and handled this. This email came to me through the County Treasurer back in 2018, the late 18 and into the spring of 19. At settlement times, it's when it came up. We did reply, the last time we replied and we were in compliance, it was sent to the Department of Treasury on March 26th, 2019, at 2:29 PM in the afternoon. I got a confirmation from Treasury that they received our plan and our financial information. What I'm here asking you for tonight, what needs to be done? Because we only have 60 days to comply with this, same from the time you received the letter. And, and what I'm here asking you for is permission to, to proceed forward with this. And talking with Superintendent Hildebrand today, our planner has not, is not involved in this. And she doesn't want to, my understanding is, I'm not going to speak for her, but she doesn't want to involve township staff in this. By the ordinance 63, I am the treasurer of the township, therefore I am responsible for the finances of the DDA. And it's clearly states in the statute with myself or the director of the DDAs who's supposed to do this. We don't have a director to the DDA. We have never had a director. Brian Shorkey is the planning, your planner, your township planner, served as a, as Dan told me, he was a township DDA coordinator. So we, we were not in, we didn't, we didn't have a person in that position. However, myself and the township clerk are the two authorized signers on their accounts. So I need to take and run this by you, and I sent you ahead or send you a copy of all this today, tonight. We're gonna have to take and send this right out. And I'm, I've already looked up the Treasury website on the forms. I know what I have to fill out financially is pretty simple. We, we report DDA activity as far as their fund balances and their monies received, their increment and everything every year in the last page of our audit and, and our financial statements every year. However, the state doesn't want that. The state wants this form, and they want to know what's going on with our DDA and what's going on with the TIF plan. If there's any changes, they want to know what expenditures they are. They asked for a complete list of expenditures. And so we are, at this point, we're best, we're, we're doing, but for what they're asking for is 19, but we really ought to give them 19 and 20 both and go forward. I will tell you this, last week with our audit, that is a, the conversation with the audit, the auditors have looked at it. There's probably going to be some comments. They haven't decided, I talked to them tonight before the meeting. They haven't decided just exactly what to do about comments. I think this is going to make it a little simpler. They're going to tell us that we're in non-compliance. It's not really a, a penalty. They're not going to take me to jail. They're not going to do anything with anybody there. It's pretty hard for me to be in compliance when you don't have a DDA board. And that's their point, and they're going to drive that point home, and they're going to send that to the state, and the state's going to take these two forms, and they're going to look at them and say, yep, you're right, you're not in compliance. What are you going to do? Are you going to get a DDA board onboard? I've already been asked the question from the auditors. Is there, are you going to look at dissolving the DDA? If so, what are you doing with the tax dollars? Where are they going? And, and that's what they want to know. Basically, we have all that money. You have about $284,000 in the DDA funds at this point in time after this last increment. And they want to know what you're going to do with your money. So I'm asking you tonight for permission to be able to fill out the paperwork and, and send it in. And that's, that's what I need, and then we'll move forward from there. We'll see what happens.
Ryan?
I'm wondering, Treasurer, do, do you have particular thoughts about this issue in terms of dissolving or keeping things going? I don't want to say I'm for or against or anything. I just, this does seem like a long-term problem. We still don't have nominees, as Mr. White has pointed out every meeting for the last two months. When, when do we come to a point where we as a board say it's not working?
The auditors explained that to me last week, and he asked that specific question. If there was, if there was any interest in the board to take and decide that they needed to do something different. And I said at this time, I don't believe it's been discussed. However, this kind of took it, takes it off the, the not discussed list and puts it on the discussion list. You have to look at it. The notice of non-compliance is affecting township as a whole at this point in time, not to mention the other taxing unit which is involved. There's only two taxing units involved. There's Bath Township and there's Lansing Community College. Lansing Community College has made no bones about it. They, they would like out of this. They would have opted out of it to begin with, but they missed the opt-out date. And, and that, that's what they're looking at. You could, there's a, I'm more, I talked to Maynard Custerson and, and our point person there, Aaron Stevens, today's afternoon about it. And, and he's more than willing to come to the next board meeting if you want to set something up at the next board meeting and tell you exactly what your options are, what happens to the money, where the money goes, what you can do, you can still spend the money and, and re, re, reserve the township share for whatever you want to do with it. But it's truly the board's privy to, to decide as a whole how they want to take and, and move forward with this. I'm, I'm kind of in a tough spot here, people, because I'm the keeper of the money. And, and I'm not going to be the keeper of the guy that's going to be the decision maker because there's going to be at least a few people that's not going to be happy if you decide to disband this thing. However it works, I'm still going to be the keeper of the money. And, and that, and I want to make sure the money is kept according to statute. It's kept according to the rules. And, and obviously, the state realizes that, that they, they real, we've done a good job of keeping things correct thus far. We, we never have had a director for the DDA. I've said that for many years as I've been back here, five years I've been back here, I've said that. And, and, you know, they, they, you really need to, if you're going to do something, you need to do it right or don't do it at all. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. But we've never had a director. That's, that's one problem. We've never really got too serious about what we're doing here. And I think that's part of the, part of the problem. Not that people have, wasn't willing to do that, that was on the board. I'm not saying anything bad about any people or anybody that wants to be on the board or anything else. But these are tax dollars. There's truth in taxation, and that's what I'm about.
Good question. Good answer. Are there any other questions at this time on this issue? Well, the chair will entertain a motion then to go ahead and authorize Treasurer Wishwasher to fill out this paperwork.
I saw a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded it? Brian, was that you? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like Aaron Stevens to come back at our next meeting and have a conversation with the board?
It's the board's pleasure.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
A lot of heads go up and down here. I think you should have them here, Karen.
Okay. He will be here, hopefully.
Okay. That takes me to item 15, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Hillbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to report that we had an amazingly successful Tom King Memorial Junk Day this weekend. How many employees did we have working?
16.
16, okay. 16 plus a, a lot of volunteers, people's children, people's spouses, and all kinds of family members. On Saturday, 405 people signed up to bring their junk to the township. I can tell you that 289 actually went through, but this does not count the amount of people that came through twice because we had several, several of those. It is promising that we had over 300 people out of the 400 people sign up online because this takes calls off the front office staff, less people they have to talk to that can just sign up electronically, and that's very good. Speaking of tire trailers, ours was full, and I don't think I've ever seen it full in my time here. But I think because last year we were unable to hold Tom King Junk Day, people had a lot of stuff saved up for us. So they, they certainly brought it out for us. Those that are 65 and over or disabled have the opportunity to sign up and have our DPW crew come to their, come to the end of their driveway and pick up their trash, I, junk, excuse me. Last week before the Saturday, we had 189 pickups. So in many ways, we had a very monumental year. I expect that cost will be increased because of this, because we did not spend any of those dollars last year. It, it's almost like we collected two years of people's items. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised. But we still did have the scrap tire grant. I was able to hold that over from last year to this year. So we will have some funds that will be offset by that, by that grant from the state. I would also like to say that our young lady that is going to be our new Senior Services Coordinator, Programs and Services Coordinator began today. I was happy to hear Commissioner Washington talk about Senior Action Week. I did not know that was upon us, and I think it's very fitting. Ms. Matamoto is going to be contacting each of the seniors with an emergency file, excuse me, an emergency sheet on file to see how they're doing, to see if they've been able to get their COVID shots, and if not, if we can help them get signed up for a shot and see if there's anything else they might be in need of, such as tax services and other items. But I think that's fitting that that comes at this time, that she's starting, and, and she can reach out to everyone and see what it is, is that's going on with them and what it is they might need from us at the senior center, even though we're not open. So are there any questions?
Any questions of board members at this time?
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to public statement number two.
If anyone would like to make a public statement at this time, you can raise your physical hand, you can raise your Zoom hand or dial star nine. Judy, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening again. Karen, thank you so much for bringing on our onboard, our Senior Services Project Coordinator. I'm looking forward to meeting her. On behalf of Friends of Park Lake, I want to express our great appreciation to the township for your partnership with us on the tree planting project. It certainly looks like a simple project, but it took us three years. It cost resources and working with the township and MDOT. We were able to secure that right-of-way permit and plant those trees along Park Lake Road. I would like to thank Al and Joe who joined us that day to plant trees and would like to just express our interest in working with the township to request from MDOT an extension of one year of our right-of-way permit so we can complete the tree planting. We have another area, it's behind Wishwasher Park, that we feel would benefit greatly the neighborhood and the community and the lake if we could get an additional 75 trees planted back there. But we would need an extension to our right-of-way permit. So I would just, I'll be talking to Karen about that, but I need for the board to understand that as well. So thank you very much for your partnership with us on that, and it was great to have you onboard.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to thank Judy for her leadership in that project. She's not kidding. That project was left behind by former Superintendent Witichia, and there was a lot of coordination that went into that. And, and Judy was right there all the way along, coordinating volunteers, coordinating the, the trees, of course. And she even was able to get the road commission, I think of, I, I'm not sure which county. Was it Ingham? Oh, she's muted.
It's, this would have been Clinton.
Judy, you can unmute again, sorry. Judy, you can unmute again, sorry.
It was the State of Michigan, MDOT, Williamson Garage Group.
Oh, okay.
Cleared that land.
Thank you. So they cleared the land so that the trees would have a better chance of taking root and thriving in those conditions. And I know Judy got up pretty early to take some donuts and coffee over to that group of people, but they were pretty happy to see her reward them for the work that they did. So thanks to Judy and everybody on the Park Lake Advisory for making that happen because I do believe it makes our community a nicer place to live in. Thank you.
Looks like we have a phone number ending in 655. You can unmute by dialing star six.
Thank you. I'm Earl Watts, and I was in your discussion of the DDA, and I'm quite interested in that. And so I was wondering if there's someone who I could discuss that with? Karen or someone, or would they be willing to stop and just talk to me about it sometime?
What aspect would you like to speak about it, Earl? So we just could get you the right person to talk with you.
Well, what do we need to do to get the committee back together again and have people appointed to the board?
That would probably be Supervisor Howe.
Ray Howe?
Yes, sir.
All right. Secondly, I'd like to comment on Judy, the senior, she stopped by and gave us a basket a couple of times, and I'm very impressed with her...
Thank you.
Okay. It looks like we have a phone number ending in 040. You can dial star six to unmute.
Hello, Will Tyler White here from Main Street. I want to second Earl Watts. Congratulations to Judy Gardi for all the hard volunteer work that she's done. She was also at the Great Lansing Food Bank Saturday morning helping bag mangoes. So nobody works harder for the township than Judy. And yeah, it'd be good to get that boat cleaning station going too, as well as the trees. And I also want to thank Treasurer Wishwasher for his remarks about the DDA and keeping his eyes on the finances. Of course, he's officially the treasurer, even though the DDA doesn't meet, they still got to file those forms, so I appreciate you taking care of those. Hopefully we'll get that downtown development authority going. I believe there's some Y-Lock trees that were approved, you just got to write a check and they'll get them planted. Red Bud trees looking beautiful, I posted a picture of that, so. Thanks for the nice meeting, and I'll talk to you next time. Bye.
Thank you, Earl.
Okay, would anyone else like to make a public statement at this time? I do not see anyone additional.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. That takes us down to board member comments. So Jason, do you want to be first tonight?
Sure, thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the short and sweet meeting, getting the business done quickly, so thank
Brenda, have you got anything to say to the folks tonight? No, she says no, okay. I got to look at the faces in that room, see where the heads are going. Treasurer Wishwasher?
I've got a couple of things. I'd like to thank the board for everything they do, of course, as always. I hope that Supervisor Howe and everything she's had to deal with in the last couple of days here, I hope things get better for her and wish her well. And last but not least, I haven't heard anybody say anything about it, but as you very well know, our township and our school district in Bath Schools suffered a great loss over the weekend. Young man played baseball, was injured in a baseball game, and he lost his life. And he passed away this weekend, serious head injury, my understanding is, and I hope that everything is good. I wish the best for the school and the kids and the team and the family. And I think somebody should recognize that, so that's why I'm saying, thank you.
Alan?
I would just like to let the board know that everybody that went through Tom King Day, including his grandson, everybody said thank you. It was, everybody was so pleased that it was opened up again and they could get rid of their two years of collection.
Ryan?
Thanks to Steve for his remarks about the family in the community of Bath that's grieving such awful news. I appreciate that he brought that up. Big thanks to temporary chairman, Benzy. Nice work this evening. I appreciated your leadership. And then last, one of my staff members at my organization that I run in my day job decided to buy a house in Bath Township, so I'm excited to welcome Mark Walker to Bath Township. He'll be a great resident.
Well, I guess I'm left. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and our hearts and prayers go out to that With all of that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?